I will call to order the Placer County Board of Supervisors April 27, 2021, Board Meeting, and we'll start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Suzanne Jones.
Please join me in the renewal of the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Suzanne. First is our consent agenda. This is a list of items that are intended to be approved, all in one motion, but the Board is happy to pull any that our constituents or any of my colleagues may wish to pull and discuss independently. And I understand we need to pull 23C?
Yes, Chairman.
And is that it?
That was the only one that I have on here.
So do any of my colleagues wish to pull any others for individual discussion?
No.
Anyone from the public wish to request we pull another?
I see none.
See another? Can we take the consent then as without 23C?
Move approval.
Well, second?
Motion Holmes, second, Gore. Rule call please.
Chairman, just to clarify, the Board is convening as the Placer County Housing Authority for item 21A.
Thank you Megan.
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes. So we will now take up item 23C, Tahoe City Downtown Improvements.
Andy is on.
Andy.
You can all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we're asking the Board to take an action by motion on this item, the Tahoe City Downtown Access Improvements Project. I had a typo in the memo where I asked, or I was mentioning a resolution to approve and adopt the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for this project, but there is no resolution. I'm just asking you to take an action by motion to approve and adopt the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the Tahoe City Downtown Access Improvements Project.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from Board members? See none. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
I see none.
See no one. What is the pleasure of the Board?
I'll move approval.
What was that?
Cindy moved.
Oh, that was.
That was me speaking over your shoulder. I'll move approval.
Sorry Cindy, I heard a voice and I just, I completely froze. So motion Gustafson, second, second Jones. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. There is a little bit of a delay time with you Cindy, so I'm just going to have to remind myself or scream at me if you need to. But scream gently, please. Next is public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address the Board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action. Do we have any public comment?
I see no public comment Chairman.
Pardon?
No public comment.
That's what I thought you said. So hearing none, we'll move on to Board Member and County Exec Reports. Do any of my colleagues have a report? Todd?
No items.
This is literally scary.
Making me nervous.
So we are going to jump to our department items because our first timed item is 9:15. And we will, the first item is Facility Management, Lake Boulevard, Rightaway, Homewood. And Lori?
I believe Lori's in conference room A. We'll give her a second.
Sorry Lori. We haven't had this happen in a long time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I have the PowerPoint. Good, thank you. Get my notes here. Good morning Chairman Wygant.
Good morning.
Members of the Board, Lori Morris, Deputy Director, Facilities Management, here today to present the license agreement for Obecksor &amp; Son Incorporated. The recommendations before your Board today is to approve the license agreement with Obecksor &amp; Son Incorporated, which provides Obecksor a license to the exclusive use of a portion of Lake Boulevard, Rightaway. Got to take a deep breath because I ran in. Need more exercise apparently. In exchange for Obecksor granting Placer County a license to three public access areas to Lake Tahoe and two beach areas on the Lake Tahoe shoreline. This is for a four-year initial term and an automatic 10-year extension following Obecksor's completion of access area improvements at its sole cost and expense. And this would authorize the Director of Facilities Management or designee to execute the license agreement. This aerial view provides you an idea of how this operation works here in the west shore of Lake Tahoe. This operation is approximately six miles south of Tahoe City in the west shore community of Homewood. And you could tell by this aerial view that the Obecksor operations is on both sides of Highway 89. They have several shops and boat storage locations throughout the property. So on the mountainside of this site is quite a bit of operations and normally boat storage. And then on the lakeside, more operations and lake storage. They actually fore cliff boats from the mountainside of Highway 89 in order to launch them in the lake. That's kind of the service they provide. They have limited boat slips available, so their business involves that type of operations. They have a boat launch on the end of South Street, which I'm wondering if I could point to this on the, did I point there or here? Anyway, South Street is on the northern side of their property, and that is a public road, a road that's maintained by Public Works. And so basically their operation is on both sides, and they own all the property on both sides of the highway with Lake Boulevard encroaching, I mean encumbering their ownership. So you could see from the pier and the boat slips that they are currently in the county's interest called Lake Boulevard. And then Lake Boulevard goes south of South Street all the way down to Ski Bowl Boulevard, which is several parcels south of Obecksor's. As far as how long in the past of this is the county received Lake Boulevard through the McKinney Track subdivision map, in which in that subdivision map, there was roads and streets dedicated to the public, to the county. And those streets are shown, as shown on the map. And on that map, there is actually Lake Boulevard that's right along Lake Tahoe. So you'll see that on the map on the left. You can see the lake there on the right side of that map. And on the map on the right, you can see Lake Boulevard a little clearer, and those lots adjacent to Lake Boulevard on the northern portion are where Obecksor's property is. This map was dedicated in 1909, and Obecksor has owned and operated a store, boat marina and launch maintenance, and maintenance and storage business, and conducted a portion of its operations on Lake Boulevard. So they've been operating here for quite a while. From 1974 to 1994, Obecksor leased a portion of Lake Boulevard fronting Lake Tahoe from the county. Under the lease, Obecksor was authorized to maintain encroachments within Lake Boulevard and to exclude the general public. After the lease terminated in the 90s, the county consistently maintained that public access must be allowed within Lake Boulevard. Since then, Obecksor's has continued to use Lake Boulevard without a lease or license allowing it, that would allow its use while allowing some public access to certain areas of Lake Boulevard. The county and Obecksor's has been in discussions for quite a while to address their use of Lake Boulevard. In recent years, the county and Obecksor's has been able to work together to strike a mutually beneficial approach to allow Obecksor's continued commercial operations while also ensuring public access to Lake Tahoe. This agreement is intended to improve functionality, quality, and safety of current public access rights to Lake Tahoe. This exhibit depicts the agreement in its essence through all the arrangements that we've made with Obecksor, in which Obecksor will receive exclusive use of that area shown on the map called the Obecksor License Area. They will have the right to use that exclusively in return for providing public access areas for the public to access the lake, as well as the north beach area and that south beach area that's shown on the map. Access Area A will allow people to access that north beach area and connect to the public trust to the north. And then Access Area C connects to a public bike trail down there to the south and to Highway 89. And Access Area D connects from 89 to that other, that south beach area, and then as well down the beach on the Lake Boulevard easement that the county has. So part of the terms of this agreement is for Obecksor's to provide that north beach and south beach access immediately upon execution of this agreement. Access Area C and D would be available in June, once they clear any obstacles, equipment or other things, and provide signage. And Access Area A would be, would be at June 15. The Access Area B there will be an improvement made by Obecksor. It's not a requirement of this agreement, but it is an improvement that Obecksor's committed to make, which improves circulation and boat launching activities there at the end of South Street. So essentially, boat trailers will drive into Access Area B, go along the frontage of the lake, be able to back their boats into the boat launch, and exit using South Street. So this is considered a definite improvement to the current activity there, where people back, drive down, have to do a U-turn and go up, launch their boat, and then go back out, which creates quite a bit of circulate congestion. Should Obecksor's be successful in improving and providing that Access Area B, they would be able to replace Access Area A, as long as they provide a clear, separate pedestrian access area for the public. Next, or just a summary of the terms. The term again is a four-year initial term with a 10-year extension, subject to Obecksor's completing the improvements, which are to Access Area A, C, and D. And then obviously the improvements that I had mentioned, the vehicular loop that I described previously. Additionally, a very important aspect of this agreement is that it will ensure the continued operations of this boating business, this boat, boating service and recreational benefit to the community and tourism. So if there is a change of use in their use of that property, then the agreement is subject to termination at the county's discretion, and Obecksor's use of the Lake Boulevard would cease. This agreement would provide, provide an improvement to public safety and access, and Obecksor is required to maintain insurance and protect the county from any liability from their use of the Lake Boulevard for their exclusive use, as well as the public access areas, the south beach and the north beach area. Other benefit of this agreement, it ensures the continued use of the sheriff's boats and the Coast Guard boats, that they have launching service for free of charge, and the Tahoe City Public Utility District's existing selling school instruction and storage can continue at this location for no charge. And the public will continue to be able to fuel their boats at this location. Also, the benefit of adding an additional beach area, the north and the south beach areas, an added benefit as well. Okay, with that, I would like to recognize, I believe Greg Lean and Darren Kramer, who participated in negotiations that may be on the, on Zoom right now, and they may wish to comment. And acknowledge Ken Grimm, Public Works Staff, including Mark Wrightout, for their efforts to get us here. This has been a long time coming to negotiate this arrangement, as well as interaction and participation of the Tahoe Beaches Working Group, including SEDRA Engineering Surveying Staff in Parks. And special thanks to Coors County Council, Michael Profant, and Maggie Tides, who really helped us get us to this conclusion here today. So in conclusion, we recommend your Board's approval, approval of the license agreement that would provide the term, a four-year initial term and 10-year extension after they perform their improvements. With that, I close my remarks and invite any questions from your Board.
Thanks Lori. Great, great presentation and great work. How long did these negotiations occur or last?
It's, I think we really started in earnest in 2017 with, under Council of Michael Profant, working with Obecksor's, and then including it with Maggie Tides. Prior to that, there were interactions back and forth about how to address the situation with Obecksor.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
With that, any comments or questions by Board members at this point? So I'll open it up to the public for any other comments anyone would like to make or questions to ask.
I see no comments.
None? So I'll bring it back to the Board then for consideration.
I'll move approval.
Motion Gustafson, second, Jones. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Lori. Thank you for my exercise today.
Well now, I feel more comfortable because we're late again.
Back to normal.
It's back to normal for me, so we'll, at 9:23 or 4:00, take up our 9:15 timed item, which is the Placer County Housing Authority Assistance for Very Low Homeless, Disabled, and Elderly Placer County Residents. And we need to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County Housing Authority to do that. So.
And Greg is on the line.
Greg?
There we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you Chairman Wygant and members of the Board. I'm Greg Kreiser, I'm the Assistant Director with Placer County Human Services and the Housing Authority. I'm here to ask that action be considered for the following items to secure $3,265,680 in federal funding for the Placer County Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program to provide subsidized housing vouchers for low-income individuals, families, and veterans in Placer County for fiscal year 2021, '22. There are three items, items A, B, and C. A, conduct a public hearing to receive public comment regarding the updated Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan. B, adopt the updated Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan. And C, adopt a resolution authorizing acceptance of the updated Placer County Plan and authorize submission of the certification document to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. So this item has come to your Board in your role as the Placer County Housing Authority annually, and I wanted to acknowledge, 11 years running, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has recognized the Placer County Housing Authority as a high-performing housing authority, based on our Section 8 Management Assessment Program review. I want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our Housing Authority team, headed by Supervisor Janelle Martinez, and congratulate them on this accomplishment. As a high-performing smaller housing authority, we are exempt from the requirement of an annual plan. However, as laws and regulations, practices, and procedures change, updates are required as are reviewed by our resident advisory board, the public, and your Board. The Housing Authority is required to adopt and follow policies for the administration of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. The policy is known as the Housing Choice Voucher Administration, Administrative Plan. The plan before you is submitted with minor updates to our previous annual plan. To ensure that updates align with HUD requirements, our agency subscribes to an administrative plan format and revision service provided by Nan McKay and Associates. The plan and these updates have been made in conjunction with their recommendation. Placer County Housing Authority has complied with the public noticing requirements for the plan, as indicated in your Board document packet. These recommended updates have resulted in, to date, no input from community members during the open comment period. There was one comment by a member of the resident advisory board. The comment was regarding earned income disallowance, which encourages people with disabilities to enter the workforce by not including the full value, the earned income, in their eligibility determination for a period of time. The commenter felt this policy was discriminatory against persons without a disability. However, this is a HUD regulation and not a policy that the Housing Authority has discretion to change. Some of the more significant recommended changes in the plan include changing the frequency on updating the admin plan from at least once a year to as needed, shortening the criminal background checks from five to three years, using convictions only, and removing any blanket prohibitions, adding tenant protections in the case of property foreclosure, adding a remote informal hearing policy for circumstances, including pandemics, granting the executive director additional power regarding the decision of the hearing officer in certain situations, adding language regarding victims of domestic violence for confidential records, adding to project-based vouchers that a residency preference will be given to households that live or work within the Placer County Housing Authority jurisdiction. The Housing Authority has undergone significant expansion in both the number of programs it administers and the number of customers it serves in recent years. Placer County Housing Authority provides rental assistance to more than 556 very low-income Placer County residents through our Housing Choice Voucher Program. This includes vouchers set aside for veterans through the Veterans Administrative Supportive Service Program, VASH, for which we partner with our local veterans administration. These also include the mainstream voucher program available to households who have at least one non-elderly disabled adult at serious risk of institutionalization or homelessness. This program has increased in vouchers made available to us by HUD each of the last three years, and we partner with our colleagues at the Adult System of Care and Whole Person Care to receive referrals. In the fall of this last year, Housing Authority, in conjunction with the Placer County Community Development Resource Agency, began administering an emergency tenant-based rental assistance program designed to assist families affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, and serving 55 families with almost $253,000 in rental assistance. Just this past March, your Board approved a grant agreement of $6.7 million for the Placer County Housing Authority to administer a federal treasury emergency rental relief program for the benefit of Placer County residents. And on March 18th, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program began accepting applications. So far, 42 households have been assisted with over $423,000 in rental arrears and payments. Finally, this fall, the Housing Authority will begin our first project-based Housing Choice Voucher Project, setting aside 20 vouchers, partnering with Mercy Housing, and the development of housing in the Placer County Government Center at DeWitt, for participants in mental health programs with supportive services. In terms of fiscal impact, compliance with the Public Housing Agency Plan requirement is necessary to continue to receive federal funding in the amount of $3,265,680 per fiscal year 21, '22. This program may require a county general grant contribution of no more than $210,892. But thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks Greg. Are there any questions of my colleagues at this time or comments? I see none. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public.
I see no public comment, Chairman.
See no public comment. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board. We have two items. The, we have to adopt the County Housing Authority Administrative Plan and adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the updated Placer County Housing Authority Administration, Administrative Plan with regard to the $3.3 million of federal funding that has just been discussed. Can we take those together or do?
Mr. Chair, on subsection C, we'd request that this be amended to state that the, this is authorizing the acceptance of the updated Housing Authority Administrative Plan, and to authorize the Chair to execute and submit the certification document to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thanks Karen. Can we take those as one? The two items as one?
You can take those as one.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the Board? Excuse me, motion Jones, second, Holmes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Placer County Housing Authority and reconvene as Placer County Board of Supervisors, and we'll take up our 9:30 timed item, which is closeout grant award, CBDG 1078.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Deb McNally. I'm the Assistant Planner in the Community Development Resource Agency, so I'll be presenting on the Hilltop Hotel Project Closeout. Next slide please. Oh, right here. Oh, there we go. Yeah, so a little bit about the project. It was a 2015 CDBG grant for a $1.5 million loan for the construction of a hotel up in the Bowman area, and it was to purchase furnitures, fixtures, and equipment for the hotel. And it was funded through the Community Development Block Grant. And the idea was a public benefit of 43 full-time jobs, 22 of which would be for low-to-moderate income individuals. So that was the goal that we set. So with the project, we dispersed a little under 1.5 million, and that was in July of 2018 and November of that year as well. And the hotel opened in November of 2019. So they did start hiring. Unfortunately, with the COVID-19 pandemic, the hospitality industry in particular was hit very hard, and so it had to suspend most of its operations. However, before then, they were able to create 21 new jobs, and 14 of them were full-time jobs for low-to-moderate income individuals. So as a result, the expiration of the award from the department is coming up, so we have to do a report out and close out the grant. And we're very happy to say that we have met the national objective. However, we're still hoping to meet that full objective of 43 jobs, so we're still going to work with the hotel, along with our partners. And so we'll, the hearing today is to kind of hear public comments, but we'll continue to monitor the loan itself, the loan is with the county, for job creation and repayment of the loan, and we'll keep reporting back and document that to HCD and the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Bonnie?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Just a quick question. So what's the timeline for paying back of the loan?
Yeah, so it's, I don't have the exact details of the timeline, but right now, they are paying interest only, and then starting in September, that'll be a, the full principal will kick in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Suzanne?
Hi, I have one question. I'm curious about the job creations, because you expected 43 in '22, you're up to 21 in '14. Do you have some kind of an idea in the future when you might be pressuring them after COVID is considered over? Are they, are they going to fulfill that, do you think?
So, so.
You mean you don't have a crystal ball?
Yeah. So, so I wouldn't say I have a crystal ball with that for sure. So, so I wouldn't say I have a crystal ball with that for sure. What we're going to be doing is, we have a wonderful economic development team. They, I know recently, they filled up 150 rooms for a recent commercial that was being shot in Placer County. So they're, they're working with the county. They're also, you know, proactively trying to start back up like every other hospitality sector is after the pandemic, and we're, we're hopeful that they'll meet that full benefit that we had set.
But, but we won't ever give up and not kind of keep after them about that, will we? I mean, we have an expectation. Are we going to actually?
Supervisor Jones, Shawna Purvines is also on the line and may and able to add some insight into this as well, I believe.
Great, hi Shawna.
Good morning, Shawna Purvines, Community Development Resources Agency. So I'd like to say we'll never give up. That is, our intent is to meet the, the expectations for those jobs, and just as we will see with all of our entertainment and our tourism economy, a continued growth. So we anticipate we'll be able to achieve that job growth sometime in the future, but, you know, as we know, we're not really sure how fast or how quick we will be rolling out of this.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Is, so this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the hearing to the public. She have any comments?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment, or close the public hearing, and we have the first resolution directing staff to close out the grant, as discussed.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion Gore, second. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Board, Chairman, I'm sorry. Cindy, we didn't get yours vote for the record. I'm sorry.
Aye. That's okay, aye.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Now, we're early again, so we're going to jump to department items and take up Health and Human Services Whole Person Care. Jeff Smith. Good morning.
My name is Jeff Smith. I'm the Program Manager for Whole Person Care in Health and Human Services Public Health. The action requested this morning is to approve an amendment to a revenue agreement with the California Department of Healthcare Services to continue the Whole Person Care Program, extending the agreement to June 30, 2022, and increasing grant funding by $4,252,580, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement with risk management and county council concurrence, and sign subsequent amendments not to exceed $100,000 consistent with the contract's subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. The Placer County Whole Person Care Program is a five-year pilot program that was originally scheduled to run through December 31, 2020. The California WPC programs were scheduled to transition to funding under California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal, known as CalAim Initiative, beginning January 1, 2021, but the COVID pandemic has delayed that transition for one year. In the interim, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services has approved a 12-month extension of WPC programs until CalAim begins. The Placer County Whole Person Care Program is widely recognized as one of the most successful programs in the state for some of the following reasons. Placer WPC was one of the first programs in the state to start enrolling and serving people within only a few months of the contract's original approval. Over 180 people have been placed in permanent housing since the program inception, thus dramatically reducing the problem of chronic homelessness in Placer County. The program has won a NACO Award and a prestigious CSAC Challenge Award. The program is a data-driven program that is required to meet various outcome measurements regarding program quality, and all of these metrics have been met. Placer WPC has purchased six homes that are being used for permanent supportive housing and which house 37 formerly housing homeless individuals at any given time. In addition to the items described above, Placer WPC is a collaborative program that works to get community partners and county programs to work together more effectively. Some examples of this are the following. WPC has contracted with The Gathering Inn to provide medical respite services for homeless individuals who are too ill to be on the street or in a homeless shelter, but who are not sick enough to be in the hospital. This program greatly reduces hospital recidivism and frees up hospital beds for other people. WPC has contracted with AMI Housing and The Gathering Inn to provide permanent supportive housing services. WPC has received $2 million in grants from Sutter Health and over $1.3 million in one-time grant funding from the state. These grants were both used to purchase additional housing for Placer County residents who had been homeless before moving into these homes. WP, WPC staff have participated in providing support to public health for the COVID-19 pandemic response. WPC works closely with multiple county programs and community partners to ensure that shared clients are getting the best possible services. Important relationships have been developed and continue with HHS Adult System of Care, City of Roseville, HHS Human Services, Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras, Sutter Health, The Gathering Inn, AMI Housing, and many others. WPC has helped Placer County move forward in important data sharing, including the use of PreManage, a platform that allows WPC and ASOC staff to be notified immediately when any of our clients go to a local emergency room. The current item allows the HHS Director to sign an amendment to continue Whole Person Care through the end of 2021 until funding switches to the new CalAim proposal begins on January 21, 2022. CalAim will be administered through the Managed Care Plans, and HHS is working collaboratively with the local Managed Care Plans in order to have a seamless transition. Fiscal impact is that funding for Whole Person Care is 50% federal and 50% other revenue and requires no additional county general fund match. The award letter and agreement are on file with the clerk of the board.
Thank you, Jeff. My, just for the public, I think, my recollection is that the grant originally was a $5 million, $5 million grant, and it was competitive. Is that accurate?
The original was $5 million per year, $4 million per year for five years.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. So just again, congratulations on the original effort and the success we've had since, and now this continuation of that. So with that, are there any questions or comments by board members at this point? Suzanne?
Yes. Hi, Jeff.
Hi.
I had, I had constituents contact me that were a little bit concerned because this, extending the agreement is obvious, but it's an increase in grant funding of $4 million. The reason they were concerned is because it concerns the Whole Person Care Program. And in the body of it, a lot of your justification, you talk about the Whole Person Care Program is widely recognized, of course, and successful for the, some of the following reasons, that over 180 people have been placed in permanent housing, and WPC has purchased six homes for permanent supportive housing, and in addition, that it's a collaborative program with community partners, working with county programs. And the WPC contracted with AMI and The Gathering Inn to provide permanent supportive housing, and the WPC received $2 million grants also to use to purchase additional housing for county residents under the, the supportive housing, permanent supportive housing. So the reason they were concerned is because really in the body of this, it doesn't say explicitly what the money is going to be spent for. Now, I talked to Dr. Oldham, and he told me that the revenues were going to be used for something other than purchasing more supportive housing, but could you kind of explain to my constituents, just to put them at ease, that this is not specifically intended for that purpose?
Yeah, there's, there's currently no plans for us to purchase additional housing. The houses we bought, we were able to buy because of the grants mentioned there, which was $2 million from Sutter and $1.3 million grant from the state that gave us money to actually purchase the homes. This funding is primarily to support staff and program and some ongoing housing subsidies as well, and the medical respite.
Just curious, where do you, where do you house people for the medical respite?
Our medical respite program is on the DeWitt campus.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions, board members? Jim?
I just want to let you know that the medical respite is at the former Children's Emergency Shelter on, at DeWitt, and it's been very, very successful. And they've had Gathering Inns manage that, and at one time, they had at least two houses where they were, medical respite was taking place.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Thanks. So seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to inform the board that Supervisor Gore and I are going to be working on a regional homeless organization with the cities, and I think this permanent supportive housing issue will be addressed while we're discussing that with the cities and the towns in Placer County. So we'll have a little bit broader understanding of how this affects everybody.
Yeah, and for the public, and I've mentioned this before the board, we're working on also trying to organize, we will be organizing hopefully June-ish, July, hopefully get together or summit, if you will, with our city council partners to just really address this whole issue, try to get everybody on the same page, and see what kind of direction we may want to take as it relates to a real regional look and effort to sink our teeth into this, so.
I'll second.
Motion Holmes, second. Gore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. Thanks, Cindy. I've got to slow myself down. So we'll now take up our 9:40 timed item, which is the Cabral Ranch subdivision inclusion in County Service Area 28. Michelle, I think, is going to take this.
Hi, good morning. Michelle Kingsbury with the Community Development Resource Agency. This is the first of three actions before you today for annexation into our County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 165, the Dry Creek Fire Zone of Benefit. The first item, as you mentioned, is for the Cabral Ranch subdivision, which is a 12-lot detached, single-family residential subdivision in the Dry Creek Community Plan Area. The actions that we request today will help satisfy the mitigation measures associated with this subdivision to allow them to finalize their map. And so we'll need to conduct a public hearing, consider any protests, tabulate the ballots, which the ballots have been transmitted to the, our clerk of the board, Megan Witt, already, and then, assuming affirmative ballots, we'll adopt a resolution confirming annexation. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me today.
Thanks, Michelle.
Sure.
Any questions? Seeing none, anyone from the public?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment with the clerk. Please tabulate the ballots.
We received one ballot in favor.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion Gore, second. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is 9:45 timed item, which is Winding Creek subdivision. And Michelle, you're going to take this one also, correct?
That is correct. So this is the, the second of the three, well, good morning, Michelle Kingsbury, Community Development Resource Agency. This is the second of three annexation requests into our Dry Creek Fire County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 165. This request is for, as you mentioned, the Winding Creek subdivision, and Winding Creek subdivision is a 19-lot detached, single-family residential subdivision also within our Dry Creek Community Plan Area. As mentioned previously on the item that we considered earlier, annexation into the Zone of Benefit 165 will satisfy mitigation measures for this subdivision and allow them to finalize their map. With that, again, the actions requested today are to conduct the public hearing, consider the protests, tabulate the ballots, and then the ballots have been transmitted to our clerk already, and then, assuming affirmative, then we'll adopt the resolution confirming the annexation.
Thanks, Michelle.
Sure.
Any questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing.
No public comment, Chairman.
Close the public hearing with no public comment and tabulate the ballots.
We received one ballot in favor.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move approval.
Motion Gore, second. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We can now take up our 9:50 timed item, which is the Morgan Knowles subdivision. Michelle?
Hi, this is last time you'll see me today. This is our third item for our Dry Creek annexation. This is Michelle Kingsbury from the Community Development Resource Agency, and as you noted, this is for the Morgan Knowles subdivision, which is a 61-lot detached, single-family residential subdivision, also located within our Dry Creek Community Plan Area. Confirmation of the annexation into our Dry Creek County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 165 for Dry Creek Fire will also satisfy mitigation measures and conditions of approval for this subdivision to allow them to record their map as well. And with that, the same transactional procedures as the previous two items, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, as I like to be the quickest one possible through the board hearings, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions?
You're welcome.
Seeing none, we will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment. We'll close the public hearing and tabulate the ballots.
We received one ballot in favor.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move approval.
Motion Gore, second. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
So we will now go back to department items, and our next department item is transitional housing plus contract with Whole Person Learning Twilight.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Wygant, supervisors, Mr. Leopold and Mitch Twob, maybe I can be faster than Michelle, I'm not sure. However, Twilight Abrahamson, Director for Children's System Care, and I am here today to present this item. So the California Department of Social Services requires counties, including Placer County, to provide services to emancipating foster youth ages 18 to 24. The THP Plus program provides up to 24 months of service to more than 20 youth each year who live in Placer County and graduate to adulthood without permanent living situations. These youth receive not only housing assistance, but a full range of life skills counseling, financial management, employment skills training, and related counseling services. THP Plus services have been successful at increasing job retention, post-secondary educational success, and have also demonstrated success in eliminating public service dependence. The current contract was awarded as a result of an RFP that was solicited in 2008 and is expiring. RFP number 20135 was developed to establish a new contract for THP Plus services for the next three years. Notification of the RFP was emailed to 449 agencies and posted on Placer County's procurement's website. A total of nine agencies assessed and downloaded the RFP. However, formal responses were received from four agencies. An evaluation panel was established to review the responses and rate them on the criteria published in the RFP. The panel consisted of two representatives from Placer County Health and Human Services, one from Placer County Probation, one from the Office of Education, and one from a partner agency. agency. After a thorough review of proposals, the panel ranked Whole Person Learning as the top agency based on the RFP criteria and available funding. The panel has recommended award of a contract to Whole Person Learning for a three-year period. So we are requesting your board take the following action. Approve the award of a contract resulting from request for proposals number 20135 for transitional housing placement plus programs for housing assistance and intensive services for emancipated foster youth in amount not to exceed $1,810,512 to Whole Person Learning for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement and to sign subsequent amendments up to $100,000 consistent with each subject matter scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. Funding for these required services is 100% state funds, and it's included in the department's 2021-2022 budget and will be included in future budgets as well. So I or a member of our procurement team are available, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this item.
Thanks, Twila. Any question by board members? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment. Bring it back to the board for consideration.
I'll second.
Motion, Holmes, second. Gore, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
What was that? Thank you, Cindy. We will take up the next department item, which is the emergency shelter operations for Project Room Key.
Chair, why don't we, she, we're having some issues getting her, so why don't we skip items and go to the H.R.
Okay, we'll take up, we'll wait for Amy and then come back to her, but next we'll take up Human Resources Amendment to the Uncodified Ordinance 5968B, and who is it?
Yeah, Michelle Beauchamp.
Michelle.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
So, good morning, Chair Weigant, members of the board, Mr. Leopold and Ms. Schwab. I'm Michelle Beauchamp, your Assistant Director of Human Resources, here to introduce an ordinance, waive the oral reading, amending Uncodified Ordinance 5968B that was approved on July 9, 2019, related to salary adjustments for classified and unclassified management and specified safety management employees. On July 9, your board adopted Ordinance 596B amending the Uncodified Schedule of Classifications and Compensation Ordinance to adjust the compensation for classified and unclassified management employees, including specified safety management classifications via a 1% general wage increase with an effective date of June 5, 2021, which would be a pay date of July 2, 2021. On January 12, 2021, your board adopted ordinances 6060B and 6061B to implement a new approach to the compensation of all safety management classifications. The ordinances removed management classifications from Placer County Code Section 3.12.040 and applied salary adjustments to all safety management positions totaling 12.75% through Following the amendment of the code in January 2021, Ordinance 596B requires updating to exclude safety management classifications whose compensation has been subsequently provided for in Ordinance 6061B. And in addition, this proposed amendment implements no changes to the June 2021 wage increases for any other management employees. Removing the limited safety management classifications previously planned for inclusion in June 2021 with the 1% general wage increase will result in a savings of approximately $50,000 in fiscal year 2021-22. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions by board members? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll second.
Motion, Holmes, second. Gore, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Michelle, we'll take up now the next one, creation of classification Director of Parks and Open Space.
So, for the record, Michelle Beauchamp, Assistant Director of Human Resources, here to introduce an ordinance, waive oral reading, amending the Uncodified Schedule of Classifications and Compensation Ordinance related to the creation of the new classification of Director of Parks and Open Space. At your regular board meeting on April 13, 2021, your board approved a request submitted by the County Executive Office to move forward with a proposed reorganization of the county's current structure that included the transition of the Department of Public Works Parks Division to a separate, standalone Department of Parks and Open Space to accommodate the increasing services and responsibilities specific to the 43 parks, beaches, and open spaces, as well as trails and regional projects in Placer County. The proposed salary level represents an appropriate relationship with other department head positions as well as comparable positions in the relevant labor market. This class has also been determined to be suitable for the unclassified service consistent with other department heads. The estimated fiscal impact of the proposed new classification is approximately $250,000, which will be absorbed in the adopted fiscal year 2021 budget for the Department of Public Works and will be included in the new Parks and Open Space Department's budget proposals for fiscal year 2122. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions by board members? Is there anyone from the public?
No public comment, Chairman.
Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move approval.
Motion, Gore, second. Holmes, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item, Michelle, is the establishment of salary grades for classifications represented by the Placer County Law Enforcement Management Association.
So, for the record, one more time, Michelle Beauchamp, Assistant Director of Human Resources, here to introduce an ordinance, waive oral reading, amending the Uncodified Schedule of Classifications and Compensation Ordinance related to the establishment of salary grades for classifications represented by the Placer County Law Enforcement Management Association. On April 13, 2021, your board adopted a resolution recognizing PC Lima as the exclusively recognized employee organization for sworn classified law enforcement managers. This bargaining unit includes classified safety managers assigned to the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office, holding the classifications of sheriff's captain, sheriff's lieutenant, and supervising district attorney investigator. The recommended action proposes no changes to classifications or their compensation other than the renaming of the applicable salary grades, and there is no fiscal impact associated with this ordinance. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, anyone from the public?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comments, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'll second.
Motion, Holmes, second. Gore, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. And is Amy?
We do, we now have Amy on the line.
Okay, we now have Amy Ellis for, will be going back up to whatever it is, item C, but it's emergency shelter operations for Project Room Key.
I'm kind of too early to say. Yes, I'm here, good morning, Chair Weigant.
Good morning, Amy.
So sorry, I lost internet connection at the exact wrong moment, so thank you for your patience. I'm Amy Ellis, Director of the Adult System of Care. I'm here today to have your board approve a revenue agreement with Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras, otherwise known as HERCS, in the amount not to exceed $800,000 for the period of January 1, 2021 to September 30, 2022, to provide emergency shelter operations for Project Room Key in Placer County, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement with risk management and county council concurrence, and to sign any subsequent amendments consistent with the subject matter and scope of work not to exceed $80,000 with risk management and county council concurrence. Due to the current COVID-19 worldwide health emergency, as you guys know, Health and Human Services has been providing emergency housing for individuals who are at risk and have no other safe lodging options or ways to self-isolate. We've been doing that since April 17, 2020. HERCS was provided an emergency solutions grant, COVID-19 Program Emergency Shelter Operation Funding from the State of California to address homelessness. Adult System of Care applied for and was awarded a grant for $800,000 from HERCS to continue our emergency shelter services to Placer residents through the end of June 2021. This funding, along with other state and federal sources intended for the service, will be combined to be able to meet any gaps. We're continuing to evaluate public need for continued service and available funding as we move forward, and we do not have a determined final end date for Project Room Key at this moment. These grant dollars from HERCS have been and will be appropriately included in our department's budgets, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions? Bonnie?
Thank you, good morning, Amy, appreciate the report. Quick question, so as case rates of COVID go down, I'm guessing that there will be fewer people utilizing the service, hopefully that's the case, but do they have to have COVID and/or have to be at risk of COVID or have been exposed in order to use these funds for this program?
So they have to be at risk of or exposed, which means they could have like a health condition that makes them higher risk if they were to contract. So they don't actually have to have had COVID or been exposed to utilize the service, but they do have to have risk factors.
Got it.
And they have to be Placer County residents.
Okay, so we have the $800,000 that can be used until the time it runs out, and that could be up through September 2022 or prior to then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
No public comment, Chairman.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll second.
Motion, Holmes, second. Gore, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Let's take the next department item. We're one minute ahead still. Public Works, Highway 49 Sewer Trunk Upsizing Design. Robin.
Good morning, Chairman Weigant, distinguished members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yep, thanks.
Okay, hi, I'm Robin Mahoney, Senior Engineer, Department of Public Works, Environmental Engineering. Department is requesting today that your board approve the award of competitive bid number 20137 to Stan Tech Consulting Services and execute contract for design of Highway 49 Sewer Trunk Upsizing for $582,028. Authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute changes to the contract up to $58,202, and approve a 2020-2021 budget amendment of $640,230, increasing the SMD-1 Sewer Maintenance District Number One budget to fund this work. For background, in April of 2020, your board conducted a public hearing and adopted a resolution to submit a local early action planning grant application to the Department of Housing and Community Development for $500,000 to assist with low-income housing development in SMD-1, which is North Auburn. This work will be the first step in proceeding with the sewer, future sewer construction project to alleviate restrictions within the SMD-1 sewer backbone infrastructure. Staff applied for and received the grant, which will fund modeling and design work for Highway 49 sewer trunk line improvements necessary to accommodate for higher-density, low-income housing that staff identified in two areas in North Auburn. Segments of trunk line to be upsized in this contract are from approximately Loxley Lane to the pump station on Jerger Road. DPW coordinated with Procurement Services Division to develop bid number 20137. One proposal was received at a base cost of $502,237 with optional tasks. After evaluating the bid response, Procurement Services determined Stan Tech Consulting Services was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and concurs with the recommendation for contract award. It should be noted, an optional task for geotechnical work for $79,971 was added to the base scope of work and cost to total a contract amount of $582,028. The total potential project contract cost, including a 10% contingency, is $640,230. The grant will fund the first $500,000, and SMD-1 will fund the amount that exceeds $500,000. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Thanks, Robin. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, any comments from the public?
No public comment, Chairman.
No questions, no comments. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll second.
Can we take these together, Karen? I know we have a budget amendment, so we need a roll call, but, so we have the two items together, including a budget amendment, so we have a motion, Holmes, second. And could we have a roll call, please?
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Gustafson? Aye.
Weigant?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. We will now jump back to our 1010 timed item, which is an amendment to the Placer County Code regarding assessor's office schedule of fees.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. James Lambeth, Chief Deputy Assessor. We have two items before you today. The first is to adopt a resolution to approve the assessor's office fee schedule, and second, because these fees are included in the county code, we need to introduce and waive an oral reading of an ordinance amending Section 2.116.030, Section D of the county code. Let me start by giving you a brief history. The assessor's office maintains a fee schedule that identifies the fees for copies of records, document certification, data requests, staff research, and requests to split or combine assessment parcels. Portions of the fee schedule are included in the county code. These fees are designated to recover the costs of providing data to a wide variety of individuals, businesses, and government entities. Last time these fees were modified in the county code was in 2004. Given the length of time since our last review and the changes we've made in our technology in providing these services, we've decided an update would be needed. We requested an in-depth review be made of our services we provided and also their associated costs. The results showed the following. Some fees are no longer necessary due to changes in technology and self-service options. Many items are now included and available directly from our website. For other fees, the time previously spent to gather and produce reports is now more automated, so fees have been reduced to reflect the reduced time spent on generating this data. Data request fees were Data request fees were switched from a flat fee to an hourly rate so that we could charge exactly the cost of extracting the data. In many cases, this will result in lower fees for this service. The fee recommendations support information is in Attachment A, Exhibit 2, and explains how the fees were calculated. These charges will have a minimal impact on the assessor's office budget. If the board adopts this resolution for the assessor's office fee schedule, staff will return at a subsequent hearing to seek adoption of the ordinance that updates the county code with the newly revised fees. And that concludes my comments. Do you have any questions?
Bonnie.
Can I just say it's really nice to hear somebody say some fees are not necessary and that we're actually going to lower fees? So, you know, just thank you for a little bit of added smile to my face and actually just demonstrating really that we can adjust fees as needed. Really, I really do appreciate that.
Oh, good. It's a win-win because we have to spend less time at the counter, and so that allows us to do other, provide other services and work.
Yeah, so definitely a benefit of automation of some of the processes.
Yes.
This is a public hearing, so as such, I'll open it up to the public.
No public comment, Chairman.
See no public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I will move approval.
Motion Gore, second Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can now take up our 1015 timed item, which is the annual adjustment of impact fees. And this is Gina.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Speaking of fees.
Yeah, opposite direction.
So, good morning, Chair Weigand, members of the board. My name is Gina Olivares, and I'm one of the newest members of the CEO team here at Placer County, and this is my first-ever presentation, so I'm a little nervous.
Welcome.
Thank you. But it's my pleasure to bring a couple of items to present today, the first of which is the 2021 annual adjustment of impact fees. The action requested is to conduct a public hearing and adopt six resolutions for seven fee programs. These programs include the Tier Two Development Fee, the Countywide Traffic Mitigation Fee, the Riolo Vineyard Specific Plan Fee, the Parks and Recreational Facilities Impact Fee, and the Parks and Recreational Facilities Quimby Fee. The Affordable Housing Fee and the Employee Accommodation Fee are together in one resolution. Impact fees are paid by new development to provide funding for public infrastructure and facilities required to serve that new development. Placer County Code requires these fees to be adjusted annually to keep pace with inflation. Each fee is adjusted based on a specific index identified in the adopted fee ordinance for each fee, as detailed in the staff report. The new fee amounts will be effective 60 days after adoption on or around July 1st, 2021. Of note, fire impact fees were noticed to be updated as well, but those fees will be brought back to the board on May 11th, 2021. Thank you so much for your time. Should there be any questions, myself, as well as staff present in the room, as well as on Zoom, are available to respond.
Thank you. Any questions by board members? See none. This also is a public hearing, so I'll open the hearing up to the public.
No public comment, Chairman.
With no public comment, I will bring the resolution back to the board for consideration.
I guess I will second. It's the Holmes and Gore today.
Motion Holmes, second Gore. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
It is, it's 1020.
Yes.
So we now move on to the next item, our 1020 timed item, which is price index adjustment for agricultural commissioner.
So, good morning again, Chair Weigand, members of the board. My name is Gina Olivares, for the record, with the CEO team here at Placer County. It's now my second presentation, so I'm now a pro. It's my pleasure to be bringing another item today, which is price index adjustment for agricultural commissioner, sealer of weights and measures, Community Development Resource Agency, and Health and Human Services fees for fiscal year 2122. The action requested for this item is to adopt a resolution to adjust the fees associated with these programs. These fees are related to items like adopting a pet or getting a building permit and are adjusted to keep pace with inflation to support current levels of service. These fees are determined by a variety of different indexes and brought to your board annually. The new fee amounts will be effective 60 days after adoption on or around July 1st, 2021. Again, thank you so much for your time, and should there be any questions, myself, as well as a variety of expert staff, are available both here or on Zoom.
Any questions? My board members, Bonnie.
No questions, but I did read some of this, and so I found it interesting that it costs more to adopt a pot-bellied pig than it does to adopt a dog or a cat. So I just wanted...
An iguana, too.
And an iguana. I didn't even know that you could adopt an iguana. So people are looking for interesting pets. They can check out the Placer County Animal Shelter and see those fees.
Sure where to go with that exactly, but anyway. Any other questions? See none. This is, also, I'll open this up to the public for any comments or...
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for consideration. Motion Jones?
I'll second.
Second Gore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We will now jump back to our department items, starting with 13B, which is the Eastern Regional Landfill Stormwater Improvement Project. And Robin, again.
Hello again, Chairman Weigand, distinguished members of the board, Robin Mahoney, Department of Public Works. Just want to verify that you can hear me again.
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Okay. All right. The department is requesting your board approve award of competitive bid number 20132 to Glistenon Excavating, Inc., and execute the contract for construction of the Eastern Regional Landfill Stormwater Improvement Project for $396,856, and to authorize the Department of Public Works or designate to execute changes to the contract up to $39,685. For background, Eastern Regional Landfill is located just south of Highway, of Truckee, off of Highway 89. On-site operations at Eastern Regional Landfill include closed landfill, material recovery facility, household hazardous waste transfer station, inert processing, and equipment maintenance. The on-site operations excluding the closed landfill portion are covered under the state water board's industrial stormwater permit. Recent analysis of stormwater samples collected from the inert processing area have identified permit limit exceedances for iron. A stormwater treatment facility is required in this area to comply with the industrial permit. The Department of Public Works coordinated with Procurement Services Division to develop bid numbers 20082 and 20132 in April and December of 2020, respectively. Eight proposals were received from the first bid. The department determined that all bids received at that time exceeded the available budget for the project, and in June 2020, your board authorized the purchasing manager to cancel the first competitive bid. Three proposals were received from the second bid, number 20132. After evaluating the bid responses, Procurement Services determined Glistenon Excavating, Inc. was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and concurs with the recommendation for contract award. The total potential contract cost, including a 10% contingency, is $436,541. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Robin. Questions by board members? See none. Anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move approval, 13B, 1 and 2.
Motion Gustafson, second Jones. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Pardon? Oh, thank you, Robin. This delay, my mind's just not in time with it. Our next department item is Crosby Herald Over Doty Ravine Bridge Replacement Program, Matt.
All right. Good morning, board members. Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning. Glad to be here in the morning, too. Matt Randall with the Department of Public Works. And for this item, I have three actions for your consideration. First, we're asking you to adopt a resolution awarding request for proposals number 20153 for contract number 1270 to Dewberry Engineers for the construction management, inspection, and material testing services for the Crosby Herald Road Over Doty Ravine Bridge Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $556,799, and to execute the agreement and authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute subsequent contract amendments in accordance with procurement policy and public contract code. So that's resolution number one. We have a second resolution with two components, and that is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works or designate to award and execute a construction contract for this project, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with risk management and county council concurrence for an amount not to exceed $3.3 million, and to execute changes to the contract up to $177,000, consistent with public contract code Section 20142 and the county procurement policy manual. And then finally, included in the second resolution is to approve a $4.1 million advanced construction loan, utilizing funds from the Sunset Benefit District of the Countywide Traffic Mitigation Fee Program to construct the project until federal funding is available. So just again mentioning that there's two resolutions, and the first action is with the first one, and then the second two are with the second. So I'll hit some background highlights. This project will replace the existing bridge on Crosby Herald Road at Doty Ravine, which is at the, at the end of its useful life. It's a 75-year-old bridge. The proposed project would construct a new bridge, a new single-span concrete bridge on essentially the same alignment, but with some smoother roadway geometrics. And our goal is to construct the project this summer with Crosby Herald Road closed at the construction site from June until December. And the estimated cost of the whole construction phase, which includes the construction contract, the construction management contract, and staff time is $4.1 million. Regarding the first action item in resolution, Dewberry was selected as the most qualified firm out of five other firms who submitted proposals by review panel of public work staff. And then the second resolution, those two actions go together. As I mentioned, our objective is to construct the bridge this summer, and we were faced with a few challenges that the second resolution addresses. First is that the federal highway bridge program is oversubscribed, and the funding for this project had to be programmed or planned in the future, even though the project was ready for construction this year. In January, I was actually, not here on Zoom, but there in the board chambers, where you approved the use of the advanced construction authorization, which allows us to proceed with federally reimbursable work until federal funding is available, using our own local funds. But that leads me to the second challenge, which is the time that it took us, it took Caltrans to process our advanced construction request. They have to authorize our progress before we can proceed, and it just simply took longer than we expected. And then the last challenge that we have on all of our bridge projects is that we have environmental regulatory permits that have in-water work constraints that limit our contractors' work between June and October. So delegating the authority to award and executing the construction contract really saves us about a month and allows us to start the in-water work in June, which gives us the time that we need to complete the bridge construction, all in accordance with our permits, and it mitigates the time that it took to get our authorization from Caltrans. And then the advanced construction loan allows us to proceed with construction this year, again, utilizing our own funds from the Sunset Benefit District, which will be reimbursed no later than 2024. And really, you know, I know there's a lot here, but the bottom line was that we wanted to, we're seeing some lower bridge construction costs that we want to take advantage of. You'll see in the next item with Kyle, that project was under the engineer's estimate. So that's, that's really why we're pushing to get this work done this year. So I know there's a lot there, but with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Great work, and just a special thanks, this project, both of them actually, are in my district, and this one real close to where I live, so I know that there was some outreach to the public that was greatly appreciated, and I wanted to pass on to you the compliments that I got as a result of that.
Thank you. We'll continue to do it. Promise?
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions, comments, board members? Anyone from the public wish to address this item?
No public comment, Chairman.
What is the pleasure of the board? Motion Jones, second. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we have Dowd Road Over Raccoon Creek Bridge Replacement, Kyle.
We have an audio issue with Kyle's mic. We'll have to reach out to him.
Okay.
Let's pause on this item. Staff will reach out. We'll go to the next.
Okay, and we have a live person here, so I know we can... So we will skip that item and move to the French Meadows Forest Restoration Project. Brett, where's your hat?
Well, I'm live now. Thank you for that. Honorable Chairman and Board Members, Brett Story, Department of Public Works, happy to be here today. And yeah, now I know why the delay. I didn't realize Supervisor Gustafson was in Tahoe, because you sit in the other room, and it seems like, whatever. Anyway, I'll get on with it. Thank you. I've got an item here today, which is a, I'm going to need your board's approval on with the ability for the county executive officer, his designate, to sign. We have, in the French Meadows Project, we have some wonderful partners, as you're aware. We also have needs for funding, which you're also aware. It's very expensive to do work in the forest. One of our partners, the Nature Conservancy, has a number of funds that they would like to grant over to the county to continue this project. Approximately $1.5 million is funds from a CalFire grant that they received to do other work which they're unable to do, so they're passing it along to one of their favorite partners, Placer County, and we're going to do that. They also, there's a piece of the, of the funding, $263,000 and change, from the Long Foundation, which was another grant that this project receives via the Nature Conservancy. So today, there's a total of $1.563,488 in the grant funding, but I also want to point out, which is also the reason why I've asked for the county executive officer's approval to sign any future amendments. There's a possibility for another $300,000 to $400,000. If they haven't spent their money by September and they have it available, they would like the opportunity to grant that, and rather than having to come back to your board, hopefully this works for you and council that we allow the executive officers to, the ability to sign that. So with that, I'll happily answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Brett. Questions by board members? Anyone from the public?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll second.
Motion Holmes, second Gore. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And the next item is French Meadows Project 2020 Operations Modification, et cetera.
Yes, and Brett Story, live again. Public Works Department, Honorable Chairman and Board Members, appreciate your, your hearing this. This is a two-part, one, I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview of the 2020 operations, kind of a quick summary of that, and then I will be requesting that your board approve the modification to the supplemental project agreement with the U.S. Forest Service, Tahoe National Forest, to conduct the proposed 2021 work for the French Meadows Forest Restoration Project. Again, you're aware of the project. We've been talking about it for years, and we've been doing work on it for a couple of years. Well, last year, just to give you a brief summary, we treated over 2,000... Well, last year, just to give you a brief summary, we treated over 2,000 acres, and we doubled what we did the year before. There was, there were issues with it, though. We had hoped to triple it. We really were shooting for 3,000 acres. But as you're aware, last year was a bad fire season, and while it didn't burn in our project's area, what it did was create conditions around the state and weather that didn't allow us to work. So oftentimes, our contractors were told the day before they could only work till 1:00 PM the next day. And if you know anything about forestry operations, or really any operations, when you're limited in the hours you work, it's difficult, because you have to get machinery ready, you have to get people going. So we lost a number of acres that way. Also, because of all the fires that were out there, we were requested by, who we sell the timber to, Sierra Pacific Industries, to limit the amount of timber we could bring, because they were off cutting wood that had been burned, and if you don't get that wood, it will not be available for timber. And so we, of course, said absolutely, so we had to back off. Both, all those conditions meant that we couldn't finish the work that we had hoped to do last year. But we still spent over $3 million. We still did a lot of acres. In fact, as I said, we doubled it. Therefore, our per-acre cost was actually much lower. Because we weren't doing the heavy mechanical work, we were doing mastication and hand thinning, which is typically cheaper per acre. But we got a lot of those acres accomplished, and so that was also very good for fire risk. We completed almost all of the campground work, and those campgrounds are really in nice shape. We've got a couple yet to do this year to finish up, but we, the Forest Service is really happy, and the majority of the campers are very happy with that. And it's much safer as well. We also worked on what's known as the Poppy Trail, if you've ever been up there. The idea is to have a trail around the entire lake eventually when it's done, so we worked on the one on the north side of the lake, with the California Conservation Corps actually doing much of the work, and they've done a great job. They also, there's over 100 acres of a fire from the King Fire, a spot fire that happened that the Corps actually also prepared for planting, and then this spring, we're going to actually plant the trees in that 100 acres. So that's exciting, something new. We, again, less, we only did 1 million board feet, whereas the year before, we did about two. Same with the biomass, we only did 650 tons of that. We did about double that the week before. And then there was a net greenhouse gas benefit of over 68,000 million tons COE equivalent, which is pretty good. And we're required to do these calculations per our CalFire grant, but it's also good to know for your sustainability plan and other plans that we have working in the county. So that's the update from last year. And then just a little bit about the, as you know, in working with Forest Service, we have a master stewardship agreement, but we also need to modify the special projects agreement each year with the work we're going to do. So what we're going to do by having you sign that this year is another 1,000 acres, and it's all hand thinning and mastication and some roadwork. And then that'll be that, but we'll also be doing those 1,000 or really 2,000 acres we didn't get done last year on this year. In fact, as early as next week, we'll be pulling logs out. Now that the snow is melting, we have, we had 700 logs sitting on the ground that we cut last year and couldn't deliver, the snow hit. So we're going to begin by those operations, and when the ground's dry enough. So we should be working there in June this year, which is earlier than we have before. As you know, it's the beginnings of a drought. So again, the work is going to be partly paid for by that Nature Conservancy grant. We still have money on our CalFire grant and our Sierra Nevada Conservancy grant. That will leave us still with money from the Middle Fork Project, as well as the Tahoe National Forest, to go into next year's operations. So we're fully funded for this year. We're probably, depending on the way costs are going, because they're increasing, we're probably halfway funded for next year. So we continue to look for more funds so that this project could get completed. And with that, I'll answer any questions might have.
The logs that you mentioned that were cut last year, they're going to be manufactured in lumber that are the ones that are just being cleared for debris removal?
No, these were viable logs that they had already cut, and they, there's issue with not enough trucks and qualified truck drivers around the state, particularly in our area. So they couldn't get enough trucks and truck drivers to actually deliver alls that they had cut, and then SBI shut down. So they're beautiful logs. As a matter of fact, you know, SBI probably says, "Well, we didn't have to water them all winter." You did, because they sat in snow. So it, they're still perfectly viable. They're still, we'll get full price for them, et cetera. So no, they're good logs.
Any questions from Board members? Jim?
I don't have any questions, Brett, but I just want to, the job you've done up there in French Meadows, bringing all those partners together is amazing. And I know you're moving on, maybe, but I, again, I just, Robert and I observe you working with all the partners, and it's just amazing what you've done, and I just want to thank you for a great, great job.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. And I, my intention is to help get this project either completed or get people to support you that can complete it.
Great. Thanks. I'll just echo that, and just a great step on the way to what needs to be a massive amount of work throughout the Western United States, actually, but I think the work you've done has set an example, and it gives us a great foundation to build upon. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
No public comment.
What is the pleasure of the Board?
A second. Go ahead.
Motion Holmes, Second. Jones, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Thanks.
Great job.
Good luck in your retirement. And are we ready?
We are. We have Kyle on the line. Kyle, go ahead and unmute your mic.
I can't, I can't even remember.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
It's, yes, we can now. Thanks.
All right. Sorry for that confusion earlier, but I'm happy to be back. My name is Kyle Friedrich, and I'm the engineer assigned to the Dowd Road at Raccoon Creek Bridge Replacement Project, and I'm here today...
Kyle, if I could, I just want to clarify with everyone. We got a little confused. This is item 13D as in dog, so, thank you.
Correct. Yes. Yes, so I'm here today to ask that the Board adopt a resolution awarding construction contract 1236 to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder Viking Construction Company of Rancho Cordova for the construction of Dowd Road over Raccoon Creek Bridge Replacement Project in the amount of $5,413,561, and authorize the Director of Public Works or Designee to execute changes to the contract up to $283,178, consistent with public contract code 20142 and the county procurement policy. So the county facilitated advertisements for this project through the procurement department. Eight bids were received, and Viking was ultimately identified as the lowest and responsible bidder. The bottom three bids were very competitive and within $40,000 of each other, so we're thrilled that we got a very competitive bid and some good unit prices to move forward with, as Matt alluded to earlier. So we're eager to get started here in May, and, you know, with that, I'd like to open up to any questions.
I see no questions. Any questions, Board members? Are there any questions from the public?
No public comment, Chairman.
No public comment. What is the pleasure of the Board? Second? Motion Jones, Second. Gore, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. We've completed, I think, all of our department items, so we will adjourn into closed session because we have to wait till 11 o'clock for our last remaining timed item.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider three items of existing litigation.
Thank you.
During closed session, the Board considered the existing litigation case County of Placer versus Tri-Bridge Holding. In this particular case, the Board heard a report and provided direction. B, Francis Govian versus Placer County and Jessica Lee Morrell, the Board heard a report and authorized direction. And Kevin Aslenian versus Robert Oldham et al., the Board heard a report and authorized defense of the named defendant. This concludes the report out of closed session.
The item, which is an update on the proposed body worn camera program, and Becky, are you going to kick this off? I think we're set.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Wiegand, members of the Board, Becky Rigan from the County Executive Office. I'm joined today by Captain Jeff Swerengen and District Attorney Morgan Geier in follow-up to the initial discussion we held with your Board last January on potential implementation of a body worn camera program here in Placer County. On January 12th, staff provided a presentation to your Board on staff's initial evaluation of a body worn camera program for Placer County Sheriff's Office. During this presentation, staff shared findings from the Bureau of Justice Assistance and the Department of Justice that well-constructed body worn camera programs can provide numerous benefits to law enforcement agencies and local criminal justice systems, to include increased accountability and transparency, reduced citizen complaints, resolution of officer-involved incidents, use in operational training, or to address performance issues, and enhanced evidence collection and documentation that both prosecution and defense confirm leads to timely or case resolution. At that time, your Board directed staff to proceed with a technical review by county IT of the sheriff's recommended system, a review of new position requests for the sheriffs and district attorneys' offices by Human Resources, development of policies and procedures with county council's office, clarification of procurement requirements should your Board direct that we proceed, and upon completion of those tasks, to return to your Board with a recommended funding and implementation plan. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Captain Swerengen to review those results.
Thanks, Becky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pistol would come in handy one day as a holster for my mask.
That's the first time I've seen that.
Yeah. Morning, Chairman Wiegand, members of the Board. I'm Captain Swerengen with the Placer County Sheriff's Office. I'm honored to be here to present on behalf of the Sheriff's Office on the body worn camera project. Before I begin, I would like to thank the CEO's Office, County Council, County IT, and County HR for their collaboration and support on this project. We'd also like to thank the District Attorney's Office and Public Defender for their discussions and support of this program, and this will assist in case resolution. Finally, we'd like to acknowledge the work of the sheriff's IT unit. After extensive research and testing, the sheriff's office, with the concurrence of the Information Technology Department, recommends the Motorola WatchGuard V300 camera system. The system scored highest in technical functionality and met the goal of having an integrated body worn camera and in-car camera system. This integration allows the body worn camera and in-car cameras to be activated together to ensure both vantage points are captured for video evidence. It allows patrol staff to view body worn camera, and the same familiar viewing and case numbering system as the existing in-car camera video system provides one platform to manage and train on and one vendor for technical support. If approved, the sheriff's office will assign body worn cameras to sworn staff in field operations and to correctional staff for use in both correctional facilities. Hopefully I get this right there. So the most significant change in our approach since we last presented is the decision to upload video from the field via cellular signal. The new approach added a moderate cost, both one-time and ongoing, to the original projections. However, with near immediate video access, roughly around five to 15 minutes, deputies will be able to gather evidence and write reports in the field while maintaining their community presence and review video. The true value of remote uploading will be the ability to keep the deputies in the field in lieu of driving back to a fixed station in order to upload video. Due to the size of the county and the extended drive times, we concluded it would not be in the community's best interest having deputies driving up to an hour or more to make it to an upload point. We preferred to allow them to remain in the field in their beat zone for faster response times and the ability to perform crime prevention. We also plan to leverage this same technology when field reporting goes live as well. IT determined that a dedicated feed for uploading video from a cellular router in the patrol vehicle was the best way to manage automatic upload of encrypted video. We did speak with some of our regional partners, who chose to utilize other vendors. We looked at many of the same vendors that they went with, but based on our needs, we just felt it wasn't a good fit for the sheriff's office based on our technical functionality wants. The Human Resources Department worked closely with the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office to conduct a scope of work analysis on each of the requested new positions and validated that the position allocations are appropriately classified. To ensure proper management of video evidence, training, and technical support for hardware and software, the sheriff's office is requesting three full-time positions, one, an information technology analyst, two, an evidence technician, two, and a professional standards unit detective. $45,000 roughly for startup equipment and supplies. That includes computers, phones, vehicles, those types of equipment. To accommodate the additional workload to review and prepare video for court appearances, as well as the demands related to newly enacted legislation which defined district attorney staff as the custodian of the video files for purposes of Public Record Act requests, the district attorney's office is requesting three additional positions. the district attorney's office is requesting three additional positions: district attorney investigator and two investigative assistants. The sheriff's office, in conjunction with county council finalized a comprehensive policy for digital evidence capture systems. The policy applies to evidence that is gathered from body worn cameras and similar technologies including in-car cameras. The policy provides clear guidelines and expectations for all staff whose job responsibilities involve digital evidence. The policy seeks to strike the appropriate balance preserving evidence and protecting individual dignity and privacy of crime victims. These policies have been shared with Placer Public Employees Organization represented by Local 39 and the Placer County Deputy Sheriff's Association. Both responded back and had no concerns. Procurement review. Procurement advised us that the procurement policy allows for an exception to a competitive bidding process when the purchasing agent determines that a formal bid process would not produce any advantage to the county. The Placer County purchasing manager has determined this exception applies to this program. WatchGuard also has a national cooperative agreement with General Services Administration and has offered the sheriff's office the same competitive pricing currently available through GSA. I'd like to point out that there are several law enforcement agencies in the region and in the county that have a body worn program, including Rockland, Auburn, and Lincoln. Roseville is moving forward with theirs fairly soon. City of Lincoln does utilize the same program that we were in favor of. We had some conversations with the district attorney's office and the plea agencies, the Placer law enforcement agencies regarding a regionally coordinated body worn program. Due to the very timing, training, and operational requirements of each of those agencies, a regionally managed body worn program was just not a feasible alternative. District Attorney Morgan Guyer is here today if he needs to speak to those concerns as well. So we took a look at pricing and we determined that leasing was better than purchasing as determined to be the most cost-effective approach in financing this technology-based solution. You know, the technology is changing so quickly, we felt that eventually these things would become paperweights after a while because the cameras are only going to get smaller, the memory is going to get much larger, so we just felt like it was a better option to be able to turn those back in and keep a revolving inventory of newer and better technology. The anticipated costs were broken down by the annual cost for a three-year lease. The estimated three-year operating costs for the program are as follows: year one, 1.548 million; year two, 1.566 million; and year three for 1.686 million, resulting in a total cost over three years of 4.8 million. In addition to the camera and staffing costs for the DA and sheriff, other expenses for the body worn camera are included such as training, one-time hardware and software installation, startup costs, warranty, and cloud-based storage. We did research on the availability of grants to try to offset costs of the program. The Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant or the JAG Grant nor the Homeland Security Grant are currently available. We did look at the Community Oriented Policing Services, otherwise known as COPS, grant, but that was only open for tribal assistance policing at this time. The most recent grant for the body worn camera programs was awarded in 2020 to the Beaver Dam Police Department in Wisconsin. I reached out to them personally and spoke to them. It only allowed for 50% reimbursement on purchases of the cameras only, not a lease, and no staffing or storage costs were included. Before I turn the presentation back over to Becky to describe the funding plan, I just wanted to thank you for your time. I'll stay for any questions or concerns you have. We do feel having a body worn program will increase transparency and accountability and is alignment with the sheriff's office core values. Thank you. Becky?
Thank you Captain. So our proposed funding plan is as follows. The funding for the first three years of the body worn camera program relies upon use of several one-time public safety revenue sources. State prisoner housing assistance is one-time funding assistance from the state to mitigate COVID-19 impacts to county correctional programs. Criminal justice CEO revenues are annual revenues for public safety programs such as AB 109 funding, crude interest, and A-87 reimbursements. The county's public safety sales tax pro-rata share for fiscal year 21, 22 has increased significantly, approximately $3 million, due to COVID-19 impacts to statewide spending practices, but is anticipated to normalize in fiscal year 22, 23. Sheriff's and district attorney's share of that public safety sales tax will be set aside for this purpose. Public safety reserves of $247,000 will be utilized to cover the remaining balance for the first three years. These proposed one-time revenue sources are sufficient to cover the first three years of the program. However, growth and ongoing revenue to cover costs beyond the first three years will need to be identified and will be directed to fund the body worn camera program before other new programs will be considered. So as the captain mentioned, we did research the possibility for grant funding. We even checked in with our federal advocates for potential federal and state grants to assist in funding this program, and unfortunately, no public safety grant sources currently provide viable grant funding opportunities. And as the captain also mentioned, following the January presentation, costs have increased about $960,000 total costs for over the three years, and this increase is attributable to the following: an additional position needed for the district attorney's office and cost related to uploading the video directly from the field as the captain described. With board approval, sheriff IT will work with county IT and telecom to put in place any necessary upgrades to the network infrastructure, including additional servers for video upload from correctional facilities and satellite offices, to expand bandwidth, and complete the contract for equipment and services with Motorola WatchGuard. With the infrastructure and contract in place, staff will work with Motorola WatchGuard to develop an implementation timeline to include migrating the current in-car video to the WatchGuard cloud, installing and networking docking and charging stations at all locations, upgrading in-car wireless systems to accommodate body worn camera pairing and cellular upload, receiving and configuring body worn camera equipment for rollout, and staff training. We anticipate approximately nine months from board approval to full implementation. Comprehensive training on both policy and equipment will be completed before any equipment is field deployed. So district attorney, IT, and procurement staff are in the audience and available for any questions you may have. So in summary, following this update, staff are requesting that your board approve the proposed body worn camera program for a period of three years, authorize the sheriff's office to enter into a three-year contract with Motorola for the Motorola WatchGuard V300 body worn camera system, and authorize all necessary amendments for the creation of three full-time positions within the district attorney's office and three full-time positions in the sheriff's office as proposed. So that concludes our presentation, and again, we're all available for any questions you may have.
Questions from board members?
I see now at this point, so I have a couple. And maybe for Jeff, but Becky, either one of you that, I'm just curious. I support the idea of the in-field upload as compared to going to a point, but I'm thinking that like cell service at my house is, fortunately it's pretty bad, so I don't get a lot of telephone calls at the time. It's just me. But there's got to be places in the county where that isn't going to work very well, and so is there strategically knowing that, will it be places that deputies can go to? Obviously wouldn't be as long as the, have you anticipated that?
Yeah, we actually have some mapping capability through our IT unit that kind of shows where some of those connection points are. So at some point in almost every beat, there's going to be a place where they can drive to and let that load up. If they have, if that absolutely does not work, or for some reason that router doesn't work, they can always drive to one of our offices and it will just upload straight up to the point of entry attached to the building. Or if that goes down, they can go straight to the dock at the sheriff's office and download it through the hardline.
And they would be aware that there is no communication at that particular point in time?
Correct.
Yep. Good. Thanks. The Lincoln noticed those comments. Is their approach similar to ours in terms of leasing and not buying, or do we?
I don't know, but I can find that out. I was actually talking with their lieutenant who was managing that program, but I can find out if they're leasing. I'd be surprised if they weren't. That seems to be kind of the direction and flow that most of these agencies are going to.
I was just kind of thinking, it'd be good to know that, and I like the idea of more regional cooperation and communication, particularly like Morgan's going to be responsible for receiving this information from every agency throughout the county. So it strikes me that more minds thinking together would be better, and so any thoughts on that or comments, Morgan?
The only thing I think about that is, and we only have learned this because of our professional standards unit, which currently does a lot of video redaction for things that were on the in-car camera, or even cameras that are attached to buildings that capture an event. A lot of these body worn camera companies offer redaction software. What we've found is it's not real robust. They're camera companies, they're not real redaction companies, but it's an added service. We have made the decision years ago to go to a third-party vendor that specializes in redacting video. We found it was much more efficient, much easier to use. The end user had an easier time of doing it. It was a little bit smarter technology to do something like that. So even all those video files, whether it's from a WatchGuard or a LensLock system, when it arrives at the DA's office, I'd be shocked if they didn't kind of subscribe to the same philosophy of that third-party software that really focuses on redaction.
Yeah, great.
But he's here, so if he wants to speak to it.
Yeah, Morgan, if he had anything to offer, great.
Lawyers never turn down an opportunity to speak. It's nice to see everyone. Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Perfect. I will blow that by about six minutes. No, I will echo Captain Swerengen's comments on that. In terms of our redaction and our trial preparedness and our discovery requirements, we'll use our own in-house software for those purposes. And to the captain's other point, the cost drivers on our end are not differences in vendors. It's our own internal efficiencies that we intend to have dialed in before these go live in the field. We're already doing those with other agencies that are live. Obviously, the volume will increase with the sheriff's office as well as with Roseville, but we intend to be set up for that and minimize at least costs on our end through the efficient way that we'll receive those body worn camera footage and the way we'll disseminate it to the defense. But frankly, it doesn't matter which vendor submits the footage or which vendor the agency is using. We'll be responsible countywide for those that are, the footage that is the subject of criminal filings, obviously the sheriff's office and the other agencies have a whole volume of footage that they need for other purposes, but those that come in for the filing of criminal cases or the evaluation of filings, we'll be able to manage those and hopefully be as efficient as we can internally to reduce costs.
Yeah, thanks Morgan.
Thank you.
Okay, still see no other questions or comments. We'll open it up to the, Becky, do you have some follow-up comments, or?
No, sir.
Well then, I'll open it up to the public for any comments or questions. If there's anyone here in person, please come forward, state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sandy Marquez. I'm from Roseville. You had a really good question about the uploading of the information out in the field, and that there are certain areas, I guess, in which you can't really get that great of a reception. Would that also, that thought, do you also expand it to the actual criminal act that they're trying to videotape? I mean, is there going to be a problem with the reception of the cameras and the technology in those pockets of areas in which the coverage isn't strong?
I'll let the experts address that, but my understanding is that their only problem would be potentially a delay depending on where you were in the county if there was difficulty with reception and the uploading. So would not-
So not necessarily just the uploading, but the actual footage, the actual footage of the crime that's happening?
The timing, when it would be actually made available to be viewed and for the whole public protection system. There's an uploading of this, hopefully in real time, but what I heard is that there could be delays in that, but the upload would occur regardless.
Okay, okay.
I think though what you're asking is, is there a delay if you're recording, correct? That's the question.
Yes.
Like if I'm going to push the button, is it recording right then? Does it need cell service to record?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks Bonnie.
Yeah, as long as the camera is charged and in operating condition, it's going to record whatever event it's activated for. The upload will, if it needs to, it can occur at a later time, but once we mark that as evidence, that recording is saved on the camera itself and we'll be able to take that to a place to upload it, but it doesn't interfere any, cell signal has nothing to do with the recording part of it.
Thank you. Anyone else here that would like to adjust support on this item? Is there anyone that would like to zoom in on?
Chairman, no public comment.
Thanks. With that, I'll open it up to board comments and or questions again, but Suzanne?
Yes. Hi Captain Swerengen, I have a question for you. You mentioned as long as the cameras are charged, do you have a policy to make sure those, that nobody goes out with a camera that's not properly charged?
Yeah, so they're responsible for charging them. All of the cars have a charger in them as well, but just like our Tasers, they need to test that equipment before they deploy with it to make sure it's in working order.
Bonnie?
Thank you. Appreciate the report and all the hard work that's been done. Thank you for answering questions that I had about can we regionalize, how can we work together? I appreciate the feedback that's been given to me. One question that I, well, not a question, but one thing I think that would be really helpful is I think the DA mentioned that as a result of this, having the body worn cameras, our deputies may have fewer claims filed against them, false claims filed against them, correct? Which is a really good thing. And I was thinking it would be great, this is going to probably take about nine months to get this up fully operational. I would love to have a report back as to the reduction in those claims and how that's affected the work of the DA's office, of the sheriff's office of those, of those false claims, right? I mean, the good thing is that this information will be really helpful in the future for prosecution of crimes. It also protects our officers, it also protects actually the criminals so that we actually know it's happening. So I'm really pleased that we're able to finally move forward, but I think having a report back on how this affects the overall work of the two offices would be really helpful.
Yeah, we have software that tracks all of our complaints and investigations when it comes to personnel complaints and use of force, software that tracks those things. So we anticipate based on just things we hear from other agencies that use of force incidents will decrease because when people know they're on camera or they see the camera, it tends to lead to better behavior and more cooperation. And well, once we tell them if they file a complaint, this is also recorded. What we found just with the in-car camera system, when people knew they were on the in-car camera system, there was an audio recorder that linked up to it on the deputy's equipment belt, whatever. A lot of times those went away, whereas before we didn't have that luxury. It was kind of their word against the deputy's word, so.
Thank you.
And Jim?
Yes, thank you Captain. So is each deputy going to be assigned an individual camera?
Yes, so there'll be a bank of about 410 cameras, so if we have some that go down or need replacement, we'll have extras. Every single person, if they're going to do any enforcement action, whether they're uniformed or plainclothes or a pre-planned, so like a detective who's not in uniform, will have to deploy with that if they plan on serving a warrant or anything like that. But everybody from the sheriff, all the way down to deputies and correctional officers will be issued a body camera, including myself.
Good, thank you.
See no other questions or comments?
Robert?
Yes, I was just going to check on you, but thank you.
Okay, thanks. Me, I really appreciate and strongly support this program, and thank you both Becky and Captain for answering, and Morgan for answering those questions. I know there's minimal impacts for the next three years because of the funding you're allocating, but we need to be prepared, as we all know, for taking this program over for the additional staffing and resources. And I just want to thank my fellow board members. I know there's been a lot of concern about the board's support for law enforcement, and I think we're all 100% behind this, as well as our law enforcement officers in getting this program to protect them as well as protect our constituents. So thank you so much for everybody's presentation today.
Thank you.
Thanks Cindy. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? And Karen, I have a question in that we're authorizing, we're being asked to consider authorizing necessary budget amendments. Do we need, should we do a roll call vote on this part, or do we wait until those potential budget amendments come?
No, this is simply the authorization. The actual budget amendments will have to come back to the board.
That's what I thought. Thanks.
That's what I thought. Thanks. Motion, Holmes, Second, Jones. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. And thanks. Look forward to getting the feedback and appreciate everybody working together and the continued outreach and regional discussions and good luck, and I'm sure it's a great step. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
With that, we are adjourned.